She sprays the stone with water and a special cleaning solution. She kneels in black leggings and a gray t-shirt, reaching for her tools with a tattooed arm. She scrubs with soft brushes, gently clearing moss and lichen away from words that haven't been read in generations.
The actual physical work of it is very meditative. It's sort of in the spaces in between, I kind of start piecing the person together in my head.
It's in those spaces in between, as she waits for the cleaning solution to do its work, that she might look the person up online, see what records she can find to put their story together.
I guess it's kind of bringing the past to life for myself, like to be able to kind of see it in whatever way I can to kind of build a story around it.
She's interested in the stories of everyday people, of women especially, whose lives went intentionally unremembered, and of children, whose stones she can find easily because they're usually small. Caitlin had cancer when she was four, and her best friend died of leukemia when she was nine.
When he died, it was very much like, and he's gone. And I didn't really know what that meant, especially because I'd had cancer and I was still here, and why had he suffered so much more than I did? And I was only nine, so I couldn't really understand what that meant, what that meant to me, and really how to deal with it.
For Caitlin, to clean a grave, to make it bright and legible again, is to reach across the gap between the known and the unknown, the then and the now, the dead and the living.
I just want to talk to them. I just want to sit and ask them, and I want to know these weird things that they said to each other, and these weird idioms that we have no idea exist because they didn't write all this down. You know, because you can give me census records, you can give me dates, you can give me birth and death and all that, but that didn't tell me anything, really. I want to find out what all that extra stuff is.
Some of the first stones she cleaned are three small ones, standing in a row, belonging to Stella, Oliver, and Jesse Harwood. They died in the 1860s at the ages of three, five, and three.
And then you can kind of start piecing, we have their mother and their father here. Their father died just a year after these two, 1866. So she went through the death of three children and her husband, all within a pretty short span. And she lived to the age of 78, dying in 1901. So she lived another 40 some odd years.
Her epitaph reads, "Love suffereth long and is kind." Sometimes, says Caitlin, these stories feel like a punch in the chest, not a blow, but a pain. Because even if you've never experienced that, you know what it feels like. You know it.
I don't believe in an afterlife, and I don't believe they're here any more than they're anywhere else, but I think that there's still something in the shared human experience that we can tap into. And perhaps that is a bit stronger in a place like this.
And perhaps a bit stronger for a person like Caitlin Abrams, who cleans their graves and learns their stories in the rising sun and the dewy grass of an old cemetery, where her only living companion is an old man mowing the grass. For Here and Now, I'm Anna Van Dyne in Dorset, Vermont.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR Boston. I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC.
I'm Peter O'Dowd in Phoenix. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Landmark College in Putney, Vermont, on campus and online programs for college and high school students with learning differences, executive function, and attention challenges. Faculty specializes in LD support. More at ldbridge.org.
The cases are actually going down, and hospitalizations, deaths, we're seeing decreases across the board. And that's really welcome news, because we have been seeing these numbers go up for weeks and weeks, and it seems like we've finally turned the corner.
I'm Ested Herndon, in for Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Tune in for The Daily weekday evenings at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from local Kroger stores for people who love fresh food, from amateur chefs, barbecuers, and smorgasborders, to snackers, bakers, and throw it in the microwavers. Kroger, fresh for everyone. And...
Did that get you all's attention yet? Good afternoon, everybody. I am going to call to order the October 7, 2 PM meeting. I will let you remind you that Mayor Lee and Councilmember Best Bitch will be absent, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here, and a quorum is present. Today's invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Alexander McPhail from Christ Episcopal Church. And after that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which I will lead. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like for you to join me in a moment of silence for our mayor. Will you stand, please?
Let us pray. Almighty God, who hast given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech Thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of Thy favor and glad to do Thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Endue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom, in Thy name, we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to Thy law, we may show forth Thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in Thee to fail, all which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you all would now join me in a moment of silence, in honor of the late Clara S. Lee, wife of Mayor Sherman P. Lee Sr., who passed away on October 2. Thank you. Welcome again, everybody. I'm sure if you were having a midday siesta, I woke you up with that rap. So it's nice to see everyone. I just wanted to let everyone know today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Friday, October 8 at 7 PM, and on Sunday, October 10 at 4 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronokba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Announcement, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expirations of the terms of office. The Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. Roanoke Cultural Endowment Board of Directors, one vacancy. Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. The Toying Advisory Board, one vacancy, which should be a citizen at large. And you can apply for any of these positions at the city's homepage. It's an online application, and we urge you to apply for any of the above vacancies. And now we'll move on to item number two. We have some recognitions. First, we'll call on the city manager for recognition of the Department of Transportation.
Thank you. So as you all know, we're very proud of the work that our workers do every single day and the dedication that they have. Every so often, we actually see work that is outside of the norm, that is even more exemplary and worthy of note, and we have one of those instances today, and wanted to bring it to your attention. And Mark Jamison is going to introduce this and give you a little bit of background as well.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Vice Mayor, members of council. This is John Rolland. He's an employee in our Transportation Division. I am very pleased to be able to recognize him today for being observant and taking very appropriate action to avert what really could have been a potential tragedy. John was coming in before dawn a couple of weeks ago, and on Hunt Avenue, I believe, and saw a young child, four or five years old, was riding a bike out in the street in the middle of the night.
Wow.
He stopped and couldn't locate parents, called 911, waited till the police arrived, and they were able to address the situation. But John's action and actually taking the act of stopping and addressing that situation, again, potentially diverted a tragedy. So, John, thank you so much for taking that action, for seeing something and actually taking action to do something. And we're very happy to present you with a Star City Award today in recognition. Thank you so much.
I just want to say thank you, appreciate it, for this guest, Mark Jamison, and everybody on the council. Appreciate it.
Thank you for those brave actions.
And I should recognize, John obviously had the conversation with Bobby Johnson, his supervisor. Bobby's the supervisor of Landscape Maintenance Section, and Dwayne Gardin, Transportation Division Manager. Thanks for them, to bringing that to my attention and to recognizing and making this recommendation. So thank you all very much, and thank you, John.
Thank you, John. We have one more presentation, which is the Innovation Award honoring Star City Reads, and that is going to be presented by Councilmember Cobb.
So this past Sunday through Tuesday, Councilwoman Stephanie Moon Reynolds and Councilman Jeffrey and myself were able to represent our city at the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference, which was held in Leesburg. And during the opening ceremonies, they took time to present a number of innovation awards. And we were delighted and honored to be there to receive the Innovation Award for the City of Roanoke for the category Working with Youth. And I wanted to share with you what was shared during the presentation to all of the representatives that were there. City of Roanoke was the winner for Working with Youth. The program was the Star City Reads Program, which works to combat literacy challenges by ensuring that all our city's children have access to books beginning at birth. From July 2020 until June 2021, they placed 19,764 books into the hands of at-risk children. This was a nearly 40% increase from the previous year. Given the difficulties of the COVID-19 pandemic, family literacy became more important, as many children in the community needed to learn at home. Through virtual Storytimes and STEM activities, the program adapted to reach more families. Curbside literacy kits provided families with books, educational opportunities, and at-home activities. Moreover, the libraries developed a state-of-the-art neighborhood e-branch for literacy programs, children's activities, and educational materials in a friendly outdoor environment. The program also distributed books and educational materials at the Melrose Fall Festival in October 2020, and at the New Read and Ready Festival in June 2021. With 33 community partnerships, Star City Reads increased its presence in the community to distribute a record number of books to children in need this past year. One of the judges said, "I think this was a great example of a collaborative solution by using so many partners to create the program and continue its success. They have seen a huge impact in graduation rates since inception. The fact that they have gathered so many community partners that are beyond local government shows the impact and success it has created. I think this is a program that can be scaled up or down to a community size." So I want to not only commend our city, but I especially want to commend and present this Innovation Award for the 2021 Working with Youth Award to Sheila Umberger, Director of our Libraries.
I know. I'm going to set it right here. Well, thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for this presentation. When we first started Star City Reads in 2014, what we realized really fast is there are a lot of individuals in the city that love and work for children. And can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
And what we've learned as the lead of the Star City Reads campaign, which is part of a national campaign of almost 500 communities called the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, is that as the lead, we've learned that the best way to help our children is to work together. And so I would thank all of our partners who are part of this award, but it makes me very proud to work in Roanoke and to work with so many community partners that care about our children. And so, again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Could we get Robert and Stephanie to come in since we were there?
This could be a fitness award. Moving on to item number three, Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have one speaker to sign up, Michael Hamler, but I don't see him in the audience, so...
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number four, which is our Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, so if discussion is desired, it will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion?
Move to Consent Agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye, and the Consent Agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda, item number four, Public Hearings, there are none. Petitions and Communications, none. And number seven, Reports of the City Officers and Comments of the City Manager. I will go to our city manager for briefing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. This is our second briefing for today, and we are joined by John Hall with the Roanoke Regional Partnership. And I think all of you know that we are one of the partners of the partnership. This is our regional economic development organization that works so closely with us and with all of our other communities surrounding us in really bolstering the local economy, growing it, and so on. And that group has recently completed an update to their strategic plan, and so we've asked John, and John has graciously agreed to provide an overview of that plan and kind of how it'll be used over the next five years or so as we move forward. So, thank you, John.
Welcome, John.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Cal, and thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor, as well as the members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to provide the briefing. I do need to leave the show. Thank you again for the opportunity to present the Thrive 2027 Strategic Plans, our new five-year plan for the Roanoke Regional Partnership for Regional Economic Development. I'd like to start with a little bit of an update from the Roanoke Regional Partnership on activities since our last annual update, and then we'll go into the plan. So this calendar year, we've seen two expansions, one new location, total of 265 jobs, $48 million capital investment. With our robust pipeline, I think we could see some additional activities, some additional closure by the end of the year. We've had a strong level of project activity this year, which may be surprising to some companies considering the Roanoke region for expansion and investment. We've had a 70% increase in terms of our project activity this calendar year over last. And I'll just note that 2020 actually saw robust activity in spite of the global pandemic. 2020 was up over 2019 activity. So there continues to be strong interest in locating in the Roanoke region of Virginia. In terms of a economic, bit of an economic impact, or economic update, I should say, the pandemic recovery, we've, the region has seen 10,800 jobs of the 16,000 or so lost in the midst of the pandemic recovered. That represents roughly an 80% recovery of employment, which is a higher percentage than the state's percentage of 72%. So most economic sectors are witnessing strong recovery. Leisure and hospitality was the most severely impacted sector, with 6,600 jobs lost since April of 2020. Roughly 5,500 of those jobs have returned. There's been strong recovery in retail as well. Trade, transportation utilities, as a sector surpasses the 2020 employment figures. Driving some of that lead activity I was discussing is the work going on in the region on product development. City of Roanoke, of course, is a partner in the Woodhaven Technology Park, along with Roanoke County and City of Salem. That property, which can accommodate a 53-acre pad, is driving larger projects, larger capital investment, larger employment impact-type projects to evaluate the region. So that's very good news, that investment is paying off. The site will soon be a Tier 5, which is the highest level of readiness in the state's certification process. Means it's a, it represents a very competitive, strong and ready piece of real estate to accommodate investment. In the last 18 months, really as the pandemic started, that property has seen development of utilities extended. The entrance road has been paved and completed on that property. There's been clearing and grading, and it shows, has a high degree of curb appeal right now for projects considering investment. So back to the issue of job recovery, 80% regained. How will we regain the rest? And I think that's an excellent segue into Thrive 2027, our new five-year strategic plan for regional economic development. We developed the plan this spring and summer, together with our partners, local government partners, but also business leadership, nonprofit leadership, and others. It was a great opportunity to reevaluate our program of work in the region with a new executive, because I took over in January, and an opportunity to react to new economic realities, whether you call them pandemic or post-pandemic economic realities, whatever they may be. Obviously, the world has changed. Just to recap the previous five-year plan, which was successful, the 2016 plan did result in the creation of 3,255 indirect and direct, direct and indirect new jobs, and a capital investment within the Roanoke region of $527 million, quite substantial. The Thrive 2027 planning process was a five-month-long strategic planning process, involved research and advisory committee. That advisory committee included representatives of community leadership, nonprofit leadership, business and government leadership. We had focus groups to include outreach to small and medium-sized businesses, a number of sectors in the region, as well as young and diverse populations. We had a community survey that was promoted widely through social media, a public survey. We promoted that through the social channels of the partnership, as well as our partners, both in local government and our development partners, to collect, again, the purpose was to collect feedback from the entire region's public. All this information went into the formation of vision, goals, objectives, and tactics, and that's what we'll be going over here very shortly. The Thrive 2027 vision, Roanoke region has a thriving, innovative, and growing economy that is inclusive of diverse business and talent, with quality sites, advanced infrastructure, and an array of natural and cultural lifestyle amenities and activities. We do further break down the definitions of thriving, innovative, and growing, which thriving refers to a regional economy that is progressing towards prosperity for all residents and businesses of all sizes. Innovative encompasses intellectual capacity or capital of researchers, entrepreneurs, and workers across industries that are translating novel ideas into valued differentiated products, services, and companies. And the term growing, a holistic term that acknowledges the importance of job creation as a key driver of economic development and opportunity, but also recognizes the necessity of population growth and workforce expansion for continued economic vitality. The strategic plan does go into four critical action areas for the regional economy, which include economic growth and innovation, otherwise known as supporting the growth of our region's economy and businesses, talent attraction and workforce development, which includes attracting talent and developing talent, developing our talent resources here among our residents, commercial real estate and infrastructure, developing the real estate solutions to capture opportunity, as well as place-making and livability, developing the region's sense of place and marketing its livability to talent and to businesses. Looking at the first goal area of economic growth and innovation, the specific objectives include enhancing business attraction activities, also providing resources to our local governments which take the lead in terms of business retention and expansion. We have tactics involving boosting the region's reputation in the technology and innovation space, and we intend to provide richer resources to smaller businesses, entrepreneurial company support in terms of information, research, insights, real estate assistance, and of course facilitating business-to-business intros, introductions. And the talent attraction and workforce development area, we intend there to expand our efforts to attract and retain and demand talent, and to support our partners in the workforce development space, which are many. Partnership will lead attraction marketing efforts for a young, diverse, and skilled workforce. We will leverage our marketing expertise and outdoor assets and branding experience. We've already seen great success in terms of garnering interest from remote workers, boomerangs, those who lived here, were educated here, and have moved away, getting them to come back, and others. We'll collaborate with our education and workforce development partners to align talent programming to the needs of businesses in the region. And we will seek to foster opportunities for greater diversity, both in the region's workforce and leadership, ensuring diversity is reflected in all communications of the partnership, and supporting cultivation of diverse leadership. Some of the specific tactical actions relating to talent and workforce development include formation of a talent, a what we call our Get to Know &amp; Know Brand ambassador network, those who have made the decision to move to Roanoke, to start businesses here. They're perhaps the best to tell their story in terms of why, what Roanoke, what makes Roanoke in the region a great place to live and work. and the region a great place to live and work, ensuring diversity in that group, but also forming an advisory committee as well of some of those same individuals to help direct the work of talent attraction. We intend to provide subject-mannered experts to, on diversity, equity, inclusion, connect our regional businesses with those resources, to create a greater knowledge and awareness of those issues, create networking events around signature, some of our signature sports events, like the Blue Ridge Marathon and Ironman, to capture some of that out-of-town talent that is coming to experience the Roanoke region, and form a business response team of economic development and service providers to assist in talent, talent and workforce development issues and concerns. Our third goal area involves that of commercial real estate and infrastructure. The Western Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority is a sister organization staffed by the Roanoke Regional Partnership. We believe that entity has an opportunity to become an authoritative resource on real estate supply trends and economic development needs, and a thought leader on infrastructure and other matters involving competitiveness. And so, in that area, we will seek to develop a real estate supply plan to address immediate and longer-term needs in terms of real estate supply. Again, if we don't have the market-ready solution in terms of real estate, we have limited ability to capture opportunity. And we will look to influence expansion and diversification of real estate supply, not just pad sites and so forth, but we're looking at things like regionally co-working spaces, wet labs, spec buildings, and the like, to be more competitive for additional sectors of the economy. And our fourth and final goal area is that of place-making and livability, reinforcing the region's identity and competitive advantages and outdoor destination, by also highlighting other prominent lifestyle features and amenities, and supporting quality of life efforts. Building on the success of Roanoke outside with continued marketing of that asset and development of sustainable funding for outdoor preservation and enhancement, leveraging Get to Know Noke to promote diverse character and amenities of the region to a wider audience, including arts and culture and other advantages of the region. And of course, monitoring quality of life concerns and being a thought leader on matters involving place-making and livability, quality of life concerns. We can report on issues such as housing availability and quality childcare as, in future years. Again, this is a five-year platform for change. And so we will be looking to renovate GetToKnowNoke.com to promote a broader quality-of-life platform in addition to the outdoors, and of course, continue to grow the Blue Ridge Marathon, Go Outside Festival, and other events. And a last update, is a bit more tactical in nature. Of course, Go Fest is scheduled for October 15th and 17th, which is a city event. Our office, Roanoke Outside Foundation and Roanoke Regional Partnership do provide assistance to that event. And that event will be downtown this year to support the hospitality businesses and the downtown core, which have had a difficult year. So thank you all very much for the opportunity to provide this update. I suppose I'll turn it back over to you, Bob, and of course, I'm happy-
Thank you, John. And I'll just add one additional comment, and then certainly open up any questions that you all might have for John. You know, as I mentioned, this is obviously a partnership that includes all of the jurisdictions in the surrounding area. But as John has noted, what also makes this partnership really unique and valuable is that it is also accompanied by partners from business. So at the, on the board are folks who have started and continue to run some of the most successful businesses that we have here. And so it is in that collaboration that private sector and public sector are working to advance the, on those four priority goal areas within the local economy. And I think is part of the reason, I know is part of the reason why, over the last five years, there has been as much success as there has been through these efforts, and certainly anticipate similar success as we move forward. So always appreciate the work that we do with the partnership and the support that we get as well, and really the opportunity for the whole region to come together and to advance the economy and economic activity here for the better of the whole, both public and private sector as well. So with that, happy to answer any, well, John will be happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you for those comments, Bob.
Thank you, John. I'll check to see if my colleagues or anybody, Joe, Robert, down on this end. Is there anybody on this end? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, for this great update. And you've got an ambitious plan that's very exciting for our region. I'm really glad to see, you know, the four key areas, but particularly the emphasis you're placing on talent attraction and workforce development and your focus on diversity and equity. We're just seeing an increase in that throughout our region, through all types of employment and economic growth, and I commend you all for taking the lead on that. I had a, kind of a trend-based question, which you may or may not know the answer to, but I know last year during COVID, we were seeing a lot of people that maybe were in the hospitality industry, and they either got furloughed, laid off, when everything kind of crashed. And then many were kind of scrambling to decide, do I stay in this industry, or do I receive new training skills or retrain for another type of work? Have you all been monitoring any of that kind of trending in terms of what we're seeing in terms of retraining or new skills that people are leaning to in terms of the economy?
I think it's an excellent question. I would say that's more of our partner, the Virginia Career Works Blue Ridge, in their work area. But I will say that Roanoke Regional Partnership and Virginia Career Works Blue Ridge are looking at enhanced partnerships. We even have a joint Go Virginia proposal to kind of look at talent in a cohesive way at all levels of skill and really kind of economy-wide in terms of industry sectors. I think it's very much an issue that's changing and developing in real time. But it definitely is an opportunity to upskill those individuals and provide, and link them with other opportunities in the economy.
Great. Thank you. And the other question just kind of follows up on it. We recently had the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission and the Transportation Board prior to that. And I know one of the hoped-for transportation projects that we were seeking funding for was, I guess, to do some expansion on 581 interchange there at Woodhaven. And it wasn't funded. But would, you know, what they were projecting was that if there was a local investment of really three times what they would fund, then they might consider it.
Sure.
So it's clearly something we want to advocate for, but I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how the enhancements there would be beneficial to what we're seeing through this collaborative process at Woodhaven?
Sure, certainly. Anything that can be done to increase the efficiency, the flow of goods, but also, you know, workers and just travelers along that corridor would increase, you know, obviously the attractiveness of that site. We see a number of leads with various differing demands on the system, you know, both in terms of workforce, but also freight. Again, it would obviously be a boon and be of assistance. There'll be some time, you know, since the Greenfield site, involved in a construction facility that would provide some lead time for improvements. But we do continue to see a lot of interest and activity on that site. In terms of a site that offers that degree of brand visibility from 81, I don't think there are many others like it. And it's uniquely, I think, prepared in terms of a readiness standpoint right now in a regional context. So it's driving lots of interest and activity.
Great. Well, I want to make sure that, you know, we can do our part to advocate for that along with our regional partners.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey?
Thank you, John, for the presentation. A couple of questions. You mentioned you're talking about promoting the region. What type of marketing are you doing to promote the region, to attract businesses?
To attract businesses?
Yeah.
We do that through a number of means. We have some social promotion, you know, social media, digital advertising, digital marketing. But we also do quite a bit of sector-based, specific marketing, whether that be industry trade shows. We also do quite a bit of outreach into what we call our gatekeepers, you know, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, site selection consultants, the brokerage community, making them aware of the market advantages, making them aware of the real estate opportunities. You know, there are, there's an industry of site selection professionals that receive requirements, you know, on a regular basis from industry looking to locate. It's key for those individuals, those firms to understand the unique advantages of this market, as well as the opportunities we have to capture those opportunities. And so that's some of the work of the partnership in a nutshell.
Is there any particular industry that the organization is really trying to attract to bring here? Is it biomedical? Is it technology? Is there any particular niche?
Really, truly all the above. So, you know, life sciences, biomedical, technology businesses, advanced manufacturing. We're looking at high-wage opportunities and opportunities for which this market has advantages. And to some degree, it's a reflection of the industries that are here and are operating successfully.
Thank you. And my last question is, and I don't know if you have any data on this. I know you mentioned diverse businesses and things of that nature, but do you have numbers to show if there's been an increase or decrease, especially in minority-owned businesses in this region, being created, or we're losing them, or have you have any data regarding that?
I don't have the details of that competitive assessment in front of me. I do know that we did look at carefully the demographics, and there is evidence of increasing diversity among the population. I can't speak specifically to the issue of ownership. I'd have to reevaluate that document, which is quite lengthy. There's quite a bit of data in there. And it would not take into effect, I don't think, the impact of the pandemic, because the data does lag significantly.
If, just to suggest in the future, if we can have some type of data like that, I know, and this has been a great report.
Yes, sir.
If you can possibly add something like that, that would be beneficial to understand how our businesses are, not only just in population, but in, as far as the development of minority ownership would be great.
Certainly.
So we can key on that. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, John. I just have a couple of comments. I want to say that was really a good presentation. If you don't already live here, you would want to live here in this region, seeing all of the wonderful thing that we have to offer. It's just, it's really ambitious. And I think you guys at the Regional Partnership have set out some clear and precise goals, and I think it's going to benefit us in the end. I don't know how far along we are at Woodhaven. I remember Mr. Cal mentioning that we were getting pretty close, but is it, do we have any prospects, or is that a premature question?
Oh, we absolutely have prospects and leads that are being generated by that property right now.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
That is wonderful.
Certainly.
And I just want to commend you on the use of the advisory panel and the focus groups. This city tends to do that more so than any other city that I know. And it tells our community and our businesses that we care about what they think, what they want, what they need. And the way to find that out is to get them involved. And so the use of those panels, I can't say enough of that. You know, we've got a focus group for everything, and I think it's, that's the right way to do it. And of course, with the workforce development, we need to know what we need in order to connect those businesses with the workforce that they need. Because I'm a business owner, and I think a couple of us own businesses, we know that that could be the downfall of any business. So if you don't have the right workers or the right skills, then the businesses will not succeed. So I appreciate you guys focusing on that. That's, kudos for that. And Get to Know Noke has taken off. I see it everywhere. It's getting out there. I think it's a good marketing campaign. The strategy is well-done, and I want to commend you on that. So that's all I had to say. And thanks again, John, for coming forward with this information. Good presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Anybody else? Last-minute thoughts? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
And we will receive that and file it. And our next item is the items recommended for action. And we have a, an acceptance of a pass-through fund from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to reimburse the hazardous material response team. There are two measures, a resolution and an ordinance. Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the emergency management hazardous materials grant made to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management upon certain terms and conditions, and authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Is there any discussion on that resolution? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's an ordinance.
Move the order. Ordinance.
Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the United States Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management, VDEM, from hazardous, for, for hazardous materials, emergency responses and training development, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number two is the execution of a contract between the City of Roanoke and Correlian Medical Center for placement of outstationed eligibility workers at Roanoke Memorial Hospital. There are two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance.
Move the resolution.
Second.
City Clerk, would you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the City of Roanoke on behalf of its Department of Social Services and Correlian Medical Center for the placement by the city of four outstationed eligibility workers, as well as an onsite OEW supervisor at Correlian's Roanoke Memorial Hospital, and authorizing the city manager to execute any necessary documents required by such contract.
Is there any discussion? I would like a little explanation of what that means, Mr. Cal, if you could.
Sure. So I'll give a very brief introduction and explanation, and then actually let the person that knows the answer to that.
Okay.
It's with me, Steve. So my brief explanation of it is, this is one of our ongoing efforts, and this has been ongoing for a while, in trying to get folks that are able to provide connections to much-needed services closer to where the people are that actually need those services. And I'll let Steve explain kind of the mechanics of how this actually works. And again, it's been going on for a little while and stuff, but this is just sort of the next iteration of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, the, this has actually been something we've been doing for a number of years. Correlian reached out to us a number of years ago about placing a worker onsite that could determine Medicaid eligibility and do the enrollments. State of Virginia has a program in place that the state will pay, pay a portion of the salary. Correlian pays the local match of the salary. So that was successful, and so successful that over the years, they had asked to expand it. And so what this is, is just a continuation of this. It has expanded to where there's four workers and one supervisor onsite at Correlian Medical Center, and they determine Medicaid eligibility.
Thank you. As a member of council, we continue to learn every day. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a motion for, need a motion for the budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Ms. Suzie, would you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia and Correlian Medical Center for outstation eligibility workers, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021 through 2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Is there any discussion, any other questions? Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Item number three is amendment of the city code in connection with the newly-created youth athletics rev-
youth athletics review board. There's one measure, an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining sections 2-297 of Division 2, Permanent Committees, Article 14, Authorities, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Generally, Chapter 2, Administration, Code of the City of Roanoke as amended to add Section 2-307, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
If I may, I'll give a little bit of overview of this.
Please. Yeah, everybody's like.
So you all, you all are familiar with this because we discussed this at length at the retreat. And this is a part of our effort at refreshing, if you will, youth, athletic, youth sports, youth recreation sports. And so there are several different pieces that are moving along with that already in place. This is one of those that is still needed and requires ultimately your action, but it is the establishment of a permanent advisory board who has, have four basic distinct responsibilities that are itemized in the, in the cover memo, but I'll recite those. So the board will review and provide input during zone provider selection process. If you remember, the city is divided up into kind of four zones and how we actually deliver our youth recreation sports in partnership with other providers in the area. This board will be involved in, in the review of that and input. And also, if you all know that we've now got it structured under the review, under this process, that if one of those legacy clubs is unable or uninterested in providing any particular sport, then we'll actually be seeking requests for proposals from others that might provide that. This board would be involved in that selection. So that's one of their tasks. The other is to review and adjudicate code of ethics claims. You'll also recall that one of the obligations we're now placing upon those that deliver the services as well as those that participate in them, that they sign on to a code of ethics. Obviously, if there are disagreements under that code of ethics, it will come to the board for resolution. Third is to review bylaws for appropriateness and recommend updates as needed. The bylaws are associated with the operation of this board, so it's just part of their business, obviously, with that. And then act as a sounding board for youth sports activities and initiatives from the perspective of the community. So this is a case where, let's say, for example, a sport is underway and for whatever reason, the folks, the customers, aren't feeling like they're getting the quality of coaching or they're getting the type of play that they would have expected out of, or their kids are not learning, whatever it might be. This is an opportunity for them to be able to bring some of those items and have those discussed by this board. The board will consist of five representatives, which we can, as soon as your meeting on the 18th, we could begin taking those, making those appointments to that board. Of those five voting representatives, we're taking an approach similar to the ARPA advisory panel that we just used, which is, I will make two recommendations to you all for consideration and the other three, of course, you will generate those as well. And the Director of Parks and Recreation will serve as an ex officio member and attend to those meetings as well. So it's a new board to try to manage that process a little bit differently than we have in the past and offer up a little more direct involvement, really by our citizens, in the operation of those activities. And be happy to answer any questions. And of course, Michael Clark is here as well in case you have any more particular or specific questions. Thank you.
You could probably answer my question. Mr. Cowell, if someone wanted to apply, would they submit application on our online? What, is it already on there?
It is not yet because we needed to wait for this action.
Right.
But it'll be just like any of your other boards and commissions. You'll make application through the clerk's office, associate it with those. And again, possibly as soon as your next meeting, you could start seeing those. It may be November before you're ready to take action on those. We'll look to you for guidance on to when you think you're ready to actually take that action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
My question is with regards to your appointment and terms of members. Excuse me. I see here where you are appointing the appointment, but I don't see where you're mentioning anywhere about the terms of office. Is this three-year terms?
I think it's on here.
Did I miss it?
Yeah.
I've been reading it and I'm kind of still looking forward.
Shall be one year?
One year.
So they're only going to be one-year terms?
No, there'll be, if you look at Article nine.
See, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, look at Article nine under the membership. So terms of the members will be staggered at the beginning.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, so you'll have one one-year, two two-year, and one three-year.
So it's actually three-year terms?
Correct.
That's what I was trying to say.
After that first initial, it'll be three-year terms.
Right. Going forward would be three-year terms. And I noticed where you say, under Section E, number one, the last sentence, members may be reelected to serve as an officer without limitation. What does that mean?
Those are the officers, so somebody's going to be a chair of the board.
Oh, okay. Okay, they could just be, okay, the officer.
There is a, there is a limit on how often they can actually be on the board.
Right, which is usually three consecutive terms.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. That's what I need. Thank you.
Sure. No problem. Thank you.
So if there are no other questions, we can ask Ms. McQuaid to call the roll. Go ahead and pass the ordinance.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Moving on to item number four, which is repeal and replace budget ordinance number 42158-092021, which was adopted September 20, 2021, accepting the shuttered venues operators grant and authorizing the establishment of a revenue estimate and appropriation of funds. There is just one measure. It's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Economic Aid to Hard Hit Business, Nonprofits, and Venues Act, amended by the American Rescue Plan Act, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021, 2022 Enterprise Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
I'll just give a very brief introduction to this item as well, just for folks. So as a part of the COVID recovery funding that was provided by the federal government, one of those is this program, the shuttered venue operators grant. And this was administered as indicated by the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Assistance. And it was really for live entertainment venues, be they privately owned or publicly owned, that obviously in effect had to be closed for the entirety of the pandemic. We're just now beginning to actually reintroduce both privately and publicly live entertainment again in these types of facilities. And this is really to offset those losses. So obviously, as those facilities closed, we furloughed folks as well as effectively shut down the building and weren't taking any revenue in. This is actually for, as indicated, a little over $1.2 million. I will also let you know that you will see in the next probably month or so, a similar appropriation coming forward, which is actually a second round of this that we also received. So in total, we'll receive $4 million under this program as well. And those dollars will be put back to use in the facility over the next couple of years in accordance with the plan, covering everything from, again, personnel costs that were incurred and will continue to be incurred, all the way up to capital maintenance types items and spends. And I'll be providing you all with a little more detail in one of your updates about that, what the use of that money will be for. But in total, we'll receive about $4 million out of this program.
Mr. Cowell, are there pretty strict guidelines on that money, like some of the other money that we've gotten?
There are even more, probably even more so, because it, it actually is even limited down into this one facility. So even though, the good news for us is, we provide a subsidy to the operations of the Civic Center and, and this will help us lessen the subsidy that we were going to have to increase with it. So even though these dollars are very restricted in what they can be used for, because we may not have to then shift more of our general fund dollars over to that, we'll realize an extra benefit associated with that as well. But yes, they're very restrictive, much like the other programs.
Okay. I was just wondering. Are there any questions? If there are no other questions, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Now we're down to our comments from the city manager. Mr. Cowell, you have anything left or you?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of quick things. One of those, John already mentioned Go Fest, so I won't, I won't cover that, other than remind folks again that it is October 15th through 17th in downtown. Also want to let folks know, and you all know this already, but the treasurer's office has announced some temporary closings between October 7th and 26th. The office will be closed to the public on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons from 12:00 noon until 5:00 PM. And this is to allow the treasurer office's employees to receive training for their new tax and treasury system, as well as to test that system prior to its launch. And there's some additional information that you can receive from the clerk's office if you need to conduct business during those hours which they're closed. But again, that's between October 7th today and October 26th, which will see their offices close on Tuesdays and Thursdays from noon until 5:00. Also wanted to alert folks to some changes from the Virginia Department of Health related to their vaccination centers. I think you all know that we've been using, and they have been using, the Burgland Center as well as the Salem Civic Center, as well as other locations. They announced actually today that they're consolidating those operations into a single state-run community vaccination center, which will open on October 14th. It'll be at the former Sears location at Valley View Mall. And that will offer vaccination appointments from, for COVID, obviously, from 10:00 AM till 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, with the point, the last appointments occurring at 7:30. So basically, they'll be open consistently for six days a week, offering vaccines. And that will be all of the vaccines, whether, all types of vaccines for COVID, as well as all the numbers of vaccines. So first, second, and third doses for whoever is eligible. To find an appointment, you can visit the same site that's been used all along, which is the vaccinatevirginia.gov. There is also, there are also phone numbers. There are press releases going out in a number of ways, all of our social media information that will be pushing this out, as well as going out to my Roanoke as well. And the Department of Health, of course, will be releasing those. So starting October 14th, there will not, the clinics that were previously scheduled at the Burgland Civic Center, Salem Civic Center, will not be occurring. They'll all be occurring at the former Sears site. There will still be those individual, kind of small, if you will, pop-up clinics occurring. For example, Go Fest will have a vaccine clinic. We just had a vaccine clinic at the Hispanic Heritage Festival where 43 individuals got vaccinated. So we'll continue to see those, particularly those that are focusing in on trying to get more equity in terms of the vaccinations. But certainly want to let you and anyone watching know that that has been a recent shift in, in their focus and how they're getting the vaccines distributed. That is all I have as the way, in the way of reports. So thank you.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add, because of the vaccines, I understand that they're also offering them at restaurants such as McDonald's now, that they're starting to get it out more where people go to eat.
Yeah, I think you'll see a lot of pop-ups in places. Of course, you can still get them at pharmacies. You can still get them at your, at your particular doctor and so on. So yeah, I think you'll see these mass clinics continue for some time and then these sort of pop-up ones, getting, getting as close to where the people are as, as possible.
Which I think is a good thing.
So any other reports from anybody? Have none? Okay. Any unfinished business? None? Did you have something, Mr.?
At the end, I have something.
Okay. Okay. All right. And item number 10, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolution. Item A is a resolution expressing the need for the emergency action regarding, regarding climate adaption and adaptation. And we have one measure.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution declaring the need for emergency action regarding climate adaptation, enhancing current climate action plans, and increasing greenhouse gas reduction targets.
So again, if it's okay, I'll give a little bit of explanation regarding this. So this was also an item that was discussed at the, at the retreat and a fairly lengthy discussion, actually, about the proper course of action in response to actions that you all have already taken over a number of years, but also in some of the more recent releases coming out of various international as well as national organizations regarding the, the need to accelerate actions around greenhouse gas emissions. Ultimately, at the retreat, it was determined that the best and most proper course of action was to proceed without haste toward the update of our climate action plan, which is due for updating. And so what this resolution outlines is the basis for that, if you will, emergency action or more urgent action and the, and really the expectations of what will follow. And so essentially, what this will do is, one, it acknowledges the, the reason to take this accelerated action. And then, two, it also acknowledges or directs staff to complete the revision of the climate action plan. This also was information that was provided with a professor from Virginia Tech that works with us when they came and gave their report on where we are currently on that climate action plan. So Nell Boyle and her staff will begin work immediately on getting ready to do this. This will obviously involve community engagement as well as other stakeholders and so on. And we'll, pretty short order, will provide you with a timeline associated with what will happen with this update, when you can expect to see other opportunities coming forward with this update. And that's, that's what the purpose of the resolution is, is to move that forward. And Jeffrey Paul is here, hoping that no questions are asked because Nell's not here today.
Yeah, I was wondering where Nell was.
I would ask, though, that after you all have had the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have, to have Jeffrey actually make an introduction, because even though Nell is unable to join us today, there is a new staff member that we would like to introduce that is, that will be working with this as well.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to introduce Megan Root, who has joined our team as a sustainability specialist. And she'll be working along with Nell and moving through some of the activities that we have that's been assigned to the department this year. And I'll just have Meg introduce herself. She's been great to work with and brings a lot of energy to the team. And I think you'll find her, her being very engaged.
Thank you.
Hi. It's really nice to meet all of you guys, the ones that I haven't gotten to meet already. My name again is Megan Root. I grew up in Christiansburg, Virginia. I've been in Vermont for the past five years and just moved back to the Roanoke area. So I'm really happy to be back and really excited to be working with Nell and Jeffrey to advance Roanoke's climate goals and our sustainability programs. So happy to be here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, he bears all the words, last question, so. He is ready to answer them.
Right. I've got like five pages of cheap notes. So make them short. Yes, everything is well. We'll make the, we'll have a report to you by June. We're working on it. But any questions you have, I'll, I'll try to get there. It's just that it's a, as you look at it, we really get into a crisis zone. I was just telling Meg when I left home in 77, we, this wasn't even a topic. When I went away to college and just seeing how drastic it has changed and the weather and the things and the impacts and then, we just got it, we just got to work harder and put more energy into this.
Jeffrey, are you all still having that citizen advisory group, that focus group, we like to call them, still working? Because I know a citizen that is in that group and they haven't met or haven't heard anything or yesterday.
Well, I think we, we kind of put that down, stopped doing it during COVID. I'd have to get back with Nell and see exactly when. I know we didn't have the Green Academy the last two years. So, because of COVID and meetings. But I'd have to find that back out.
Yeah, I think this is the, you're talking about the working group?
Yeah, the working group, yeah.
Yeah, this was the working group that was assembled about the electrification, electric vehicles and those.
I thought they submitted a final report, or in the process of submitting a final report, Vice Mayor. I'll have to go back and get more information. I sat in on a couple of meetings. But I thought they had completed the report and the information as to what the direction we had recommended. But I will verify and get that back through the chain of command, through Bob and Clarence to you.
Yeah, that would be good. Bert Boyd is on that, and he felt like it kind of just stopped. He hadn't heard anything. So maybe just inform him, so he will know that he's no longer needed. You've made a final recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think this, as far as it goes, is fine. I'd like to see a little more action focus in this, and not just toward the city staff. I wonder if there's a way to include, and you mentioned community engagement, but I wonder if there's a way to include kind of specific steps that will be taken to engage the community and have citizen input? Because we have some very active, climate-focused grassroots efforts taking place in the city. And I think to have their input on this would be really critical. And I also would add, you know, taking immediate action on something without kind of a delivery date is nebulous. Is there any way we can say, because this is an emergency, that by such and such a time, we'll have initial recommendations from the climate action plan back to us for? Because I don't want this to be like, well, three years from now.
No, it's going to be this fiscal year, I guess. I'm not trying to overtalk Bob or Clarence. But our plan is to have it back up in the spring of the year, in the revisions to it. And that's one reason why we brought Meg on board, so we could have more legs to put this together for the long haul, as well as some of the other activities that we're bringing onboard this year. We have a full agenda in sustainability. So, my goal is to get back to Bob in the spring and then bring it forward to you all by the end of the fiscal year. That's kind of the tentative plan right now.
So I think what we would do is, if this resolution is passed, what we'll do is, you know, within the month, we'll come back, if not sooner, we'll come back to you all. And again, maybe through an update or one of those. But come back with that detailed, not only the detailed timeline, but also kind of the scope. And that scope will include then how we intend on reaching out to stakeholders and the community engagement components associated with this. So that'll be the first step in this process, is to actually share that information with you. We haven't yet developed that, because we've been waiting, we wanted to wait till this actually got approved. The climate action plan is up for renewal this year, anyway. So, we knew we were going to take some action. What this is intended to do is accelerate that action. So we can certainly bring, we'll certainly bring that back in some form to you all, so that you see that as we progress forward with it.
And I appreciate that. I think I was thinking in terms of budget implications, too, that if we're, because that's a really critical piece of this. There's, we can do a lot of action, but we need to back it up where necessary with funding.
And that really is why tied to the end of the fiscal year, because really, we need to be far enough into this to know if there are budget implications and what those would be. Even if we concluded at the end of the fiscal year, we'll still need to know sooner than that, obviously, if there are those kinds of implications.
Well, not only for this budget cycle, but for the next budget cycle. So that's why I'm hopeful that spring, we can get some kind of a report.
And you'll also remember, and this goes back to the presentation earlier from our Virginia Tech partners, is that our climate action plan covers, obviously, what we intend as a city to do from a policy standpoint, as well as an operation standpoint. The reality is, the city government is a very, very small contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in our community. And so, a significant part of what will be discussed through this process is what the proper greenhouse gas emission goals and objectives are and benchmarks are for the city, for the city government, but also for the community, and how we as a governmental body will incentivize, support, or otherwise see that those actions are achieved. Because you all know from previous reports that we've always exceeded, as a city government, we've exceeded our benchmarks that we've established. It's actually the community benchmarks that have struggled to kind of meet those objectives as we've moved forward. So, that's one of the reasons why it's going to be really important to have that community engagement piece, is because the majority of actually what needs to get done actually is going to have to be done outside of the government itself. That'll be a part of what we do. And it'll be related and tied to what the state is doing as well, because the state, as referenced in the resolution, has taken some steps here recently as well to try to accelerate, in particular, the energy providers and others actually stepping up to be more aggressive in what they're doing as well. So we have to link it to all of those pieces.
Yeah. I just have one comment. We are very anxious, you know, as far as climate change, greenhouse gas, electrification, all of that. And I'm glad to hear that you all will focus on community engagement, because we really want a good action plan, but we don't want it to be untenable either. You know, we've got to get some sort of plan that is tenable, because otherwise, we'll create some false illusions out there about what we can do. Because like Mr. Kyle, and I will echo what Mr. Cobb said, it's really getting the community involved. You know, with the recycling, the plastic backpack, we hope that will take off, you know. Just, there's a lot of things out there that we've got to really get our community involved in. So you guys are doing a good work, and I appreciate you coming and standing in for Nell today. Tell her we had tons of questions, and we'll get her later.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we are at our discussion. I guess if there are no further discussion, we can call the roll. Madam Court?
Mr. Cobb?
Hi.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Hi.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Hi.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Moving on to item 11A, inquiries and comments by myself or members of council. I think this is where you wanted to chime in.
Actually, we wanted to take just a few moments to share some highlights from the VML conference for citizens who may be watching in. There's an annual Virginia Municipal League Conference, and three council members were able to attend this year. And I was designated as the voting delegate and was honored to do that. Part of my responsibility in conversation with my colleagues was to approve the legislative program and priorities for VML. And we'll share those more fully as part of our Roanoke City legislative agenda. It was a really great conference. It was good to be in person with government leaders from all over the state. It was held in Leesburg this year, which is a very historic community. But actually, Loudoun County hosted the conference. And there are eight smaller localities within Loudoun County that were all represented. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. There was a lot of time spent on educating local communities about the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and what was eligible, what was not eligible, some creative ways that that funding could be used. And I was sitting there in these presentations, kind of saying, been there, done that. Roanoke really, I think, in my opinion, took incredible leadership in jumping on this quickly. The mayor and vice mayor led a very thoughtful citizen panel that was not only aware of what was eligible and not eligible, but was very creative in their work. And so it was nice to talk with people and share with them, kind of on an individual basis, the model we used as a locality. And I think others were really excited by that possibility for their own locality. I was able to attend a couple of breakout sessions, one on electric vehicles, which I know Vice Mayor Whiteboy is all about. And it was actually, again, very interesting to talk about how Roanoke is leading the way in many regards, not only in terms of transitioning some of our fleet to electric vehicles, but purchasing buses that will be part of our transit system, and then focusing a lot on the infrastructure. But projections are that, well, there are currently 30,000 electric vehicles in the state, and their projections are that by 2030, there will be close to a half million. And so the big questions are, how can the utility companies, like Dominion Energy, Apco, in their service areas, partner with municipalities to make sure we have the support we need to create the infrastructure?
Infrastructure is key, yeah.
Because it's, and that ranges anywhere from, where do you set up charging stations? How many do you have? What kind of access do you create for them? How do you build in charging systems for transit companies and transit services, which we're already thinking ahead on? But those are the kinds of questions that were being raised, and there's a lot of effort to keep moving forward on that. And then the other one I attended was on solar energy. And the focus of that really talked about the different kinds of solar access and solar systems that could be created in local communities. And Sun Tribe Solar, who's out of Charlottesville and has worked with a lot of localities to not only add solar to existing buildings, LEED-certified buildings, but also to open spaces, talked about solar farms. They talked about municipal buildings that could be solarized. And they kind of talked about municipalities in three different roles, from landowner, where we might have a dedicated section of land, at a minimum 30 acres, where we wanted to create a solar farm, to off-takers, which work with renewable energy credits and utility companies, and then supporters, where we kind of use solar to incentivize new businesses and economic development and workforce development. So those were some of the things that were encouraging to me from meetings that I attended, and just engaging with other leaders, especially as we continue to wrestle with and emerge from COVID. And I think everyone was really encouraged to just support each other in this work that we've been elected and appointed to do. Last thing I'll share, and then pass it off to my colleagues, is that next year's conference will be in Richmond in October. So I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Moon Reynolds and Councilman Jeffrey to share their comments.
I'll let the ladies first.
Joe really covered it all, pretty much. I did have opportunity to go to a couple of sessions, but they were standing room only, so I didn't stand too long. I left. Because of just being confined in that space. One that I did stay in long enough was the, I was curious, was the disruptions at board meetings. And I must say, we do tend to have hours in order. Just listening to some of the horror stories that was shared was like, what? And I just left at that point with that one. But most of my time was spent networking, talking with pretty much the same council members and some new ones, when I used to go with the council, and now I'm going as a council member. And I had opportunity to speak with council members from some of the smaller localities that had 500 or less, and owned up to over 100. And that would have been like Gate City, who knows where Gate City is at, and the town of Galax, Farmville, Dumfries, even down to Portsmouth and Suffolk and Hampton area. I ended up speaking with them, more or less, along the subject matters of affordable housing, what they were doing with regards to that, the blighted neighborhoods, economic development, and as Joe talked about, the spending of the Arbor Fund. And I thought it was, as Joe said, too, very well attended. I mean, I think even VML had to be pleased with the turnout. I don't know if it was because people wanted out, you know, they just wanted somewhere to go. But the registration fee, I thought, was very affordable, and that may have had something to do with it as well. But the location was good. I think Leesburg, being a historical town, was a good location. And I do look forward to hopefully going to Richmond to see what they will have to offer during the conference next year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Jeffrey?
This mask keep going into my mouth when I talk, so bear with me. I did have the opportunity as well, attending the VML conference, and it was very informative. And my colleagues and I decided to pick some selected forums. And I attended the social media and PR forum, and I thought, I kind of thought I knew everything when I walked in there in that forum, but I learned a lot. I learned a lot that, especially regarding adults, that a lot of adults look at YouTube more than anything. And I did learn that Facebook, where, I guess, they said, we're old. This is for, this is the site for old people. I didn't realize how valid that statement was in that forum, but I went along in that in my notes. But one thing I did realize, that Twitter actually is what adults use more, is their form of social media, which makes sense these days. So I did learn a lot about that. I did learn a lot about best practices, the use of using visual content videos in your posting. Also, this is a great way to have conversation with your constituents. I don't know of a lot of our colleagues, or myself, if we have our own separate Facebook page, the one for your personal page, but also for your political page, because it needs to be different, and it needs to be separate, because the conversations are different. And so that was one thing that I thought it was important, that to bring back the possibility for our colleagues to have our own professional political page for our constituents to actually, to be able to bring recommendations and provide information to our constituents. Also, it's something that I know I'm not very good at, but posting on social media multiple times, especially if you want to send updates, make sure they're short and sweet, and just to the point, not long-windedness. And also make sure we just do it in a timely manner in your posting. So that was one of the sessions that I attend. The other one, which was very informative for me, was called Prepping the Community, which really was focusing on mental health. As some of you might be aware, or might not be aware, that there is the Marcus David Peters Act. It aims to provide behavior health responses to behavior health emergencies, and also reduce negative outcomes involving the use of force and law enforcement interactions. So when an individual is experiencing a behavior health crisis, we need to have facilities and procedures in place. This bill was a result of an advocacy effort led by the family of Marcus David Peters. And for those of you who don't know, it was a young black biology teacher who was shot by Richmond Police in 2018 during a mental health crisis. So they created five initial areas to implement a series of protocols in the community and create a mobile crisis and community care team by December 2020. And as of right now, they have five partners, and they've broken down into different areas. One thing, of course, I was going to hold my question for you, Bob, is that I haven't seen Roanoke, the city in Roanoke, or southwestern Virginia. But my understanding, we are creating an original call center soon, which I think is very important. And with this creation, they will institute, instead of 911, you will dial 988. And that will initiate a response regarding mental health crisis. And then there'll be levels of response. There will be a response that will either be handled over the phone, or they will send a mobile unit out with the police and to see, they realize that police is not the organization to really handle mental health issues. So we will have a coordinator and have a co-response to address that. So, that for me was very important. I walked away from that, especially because of the history of the act, but also the fact that we are doing something to address some of the mental health issues that are occurring in this area. So go ahead, Bob.
I was just going to add to that, that, you know, the Marcus Alert System is, under that act, there are certain things that a locality has to do, which we've done. They're associated with some 911 protocols that we have in place. Then after that, it's really led by the CSB. So in our case, by Blue Ridge Behavioral Health. And we have been having regular conversations with them. There's, it's a number of years, I think it's like seven years, that you have to have everything in place. But there are two pilot kind of periods, one which just took place, and another one which is about to come up. Blue Ridge Behavioral has expressed their interest to the state of being a part of that second pilot, so we may be able to be a part of that. And of course, I think, as you all know, in the interim, we've actually entered into a contract with Blue Ridge Behavioral to where we actually have, will have access to those same resources for a co-response with our police in certain circumstances. And that's live, at least the contract is live right now. They're going through training and getting ready for that, because we knew, probably based off of the resources that are needed for like the mobile responses. It could be still several years before they're fully able to offer that service, and we wanted to have something in between. It's a very worthwhile undertaking, and also a fairly massive undertaking when you think about what they're trying to deploy across the entire state. But yes, Blue Ridge Behavioral is our partner in that effort. And not just our partner, Roanoke County, Salem, it's their whole footprint will be all involved with them on that as well.
Thank you, Bob. And so, from that, I learned a lot. And I'm looking forward to, again, for that implementation. But overall, the conference was fantastic. It was my first time attending, so I had the opportunity to meet other leaders in the state, and also talk about other issues that is addressing, not only the issues we talked about in our panel discussions, but also the day-to-day activities of being on council and things of that nature. So, Vice Mayor, that was a very informative meeting. Thank you very much.
And interestingly, that ordinarily, the International City Managers, so the same conference, but for city managers, occurs within a couple of weeks. Typically, they coordinate to some degree, to the extent they can. This year, that didn't happen. So actually, while you all were in, you were... This year, that didn't happen, so actually, while you all were in, you were in that conference, the city manager's office was actually participating virtually in the conference that was held, actually, in Portland. It was a hybrid conference. And so we also will be bringing forward to you all over the course of the next couple of months, some of the things that came out of those workshops as well. No doubt, some of the very same topics, a lot of topics around issues relative to, obviously, violence and other kinds of activities that I think are worthwhile. So glad that whether in person or virtually, we've all been able to attend those different events. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for that, for that update. Are there any other comments? I just have one announcement. The Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, we are moving forward, full steam ahead. We actually meet tonight at six-thirty in the EOC Room, which is room 159 in this building. You know, we're very careful with our colleagues, you know, we don't wanna have an illegal meeting, but certainly tune in by Facebook, but if anybody else wants to attend, they're certainly welcome. We are in person. The only thing that we are really focusing on now is our action plan. We're approaching our one-year anniversary and getting our residents to participate in the public hearing. That is key. We did not have any participation in our last public hearing, and just so our residents know, this is how we determine what we need to address, what some of the concerns are, what some of the issues are, or what are some of the things that we're doing extremely well. We just need to hear from you. So our next public hearing will be in November, and is it?
It's in November or December.
No, it's, we just, August, September, October? I think November. Anyway, scratch.
It'll be posted.
It will be posted, but trust me, it will be posted, because we are really, really urging full participation in that. That's how we get our charge on this board, from our, from our community. So we will definitely let you know when that next public hearing will be. But that's all for me, and I'll move on to item B, vacancies on certain authorities, boards and commissions, and I don't think we had any appointments today. And I will ask Ms. Moon Reynolds to bring us out of closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, in two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
There are seconds?
Oh, second.
Madam Cork, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor White Boyd.
And we didn't have any appointments, so I guess with there being no further business before this council, the regular session of city council meeting for August, I'm sorry, August, for October seventh is adjourned.
That's it?